I mean, yeah.
Are you addicted to playing?
A life in a metaphor. No, but I need to turn it like this to see. So this is very, and then it popped off and there's no time to deal with it. So one improvisist. Looks super professional.
So I think it was cool if kids got a pad screen. Maybe you can make some packing tape on that.
So you think everybody's doing it. You don't have to buy anything.
Price is expensive, too. Packing just for the item. Pre-cut.
Pre-cut. Like some happy face stickers on it.
For Scoob, we must have fun playing.
All right. Good evening. It's 6:30, so we'll call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education. At this time, I would invite you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a couple of amendments for our agenda tonight. So I will move that we approve the agenda as presented with the following two amendments. The first amendment would be to include any KMEA state recognition, and that will become item four under recognition time. So educational program highlight will be five, et cetera. And the other amendment will be the consent agenda. This will be added bank signatures. That will be the topic. And that would go right underneath approval of property disposal. So that would become item six under the consent agenda. And that's in there. It simply involves changing a signature at the junior high.
Second?
All those in favor of approving the agenda with the two amendments as stated, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, guys. Parent, family, and community engagement opportunities, principles. If you have anything you'd like to announce of any last-minute things going on this week or things you want to make sure that are on folks' radar when they come back from the break, feel free to come forward.
By the pink. There you go.
Right here. The axe on the floor. No, I just want to share that Junior High has its talent show and film festival this Friday. We hope to begin, excuse me, Thursday. Thank you. This Thursday, we hope to begin about 1:15. We begin first with the talent show portion, and then we'll finish up with the kid studio one-ten movie spring remainder of the time.
It's in our PAC.
Thank you, Mr. Land. Anyone else? Any other announcements?
Okay, I actually have one. It's sort of a comprehensive announcement. You know, it's a wonderful time of year. We have so much to be thankful for in our school district. And we also recognize that it's a time that people experience great challenge.
And we can hold both of those at the same time. We know we have staff members who are battling some challenges, spouses of staff members. We have kiddos who have underwent surgery or who are currently undergoing chemo or radiation. For all of those challenges that are seen and unseen, we can hold those at the same time as we hold our many joys and sources of gratitude for what we've accomplished as we wrap up 2023. So that will be just kind of a holistic announcement unless anyone has anything else. We'll move on to the consent agenda and remember to note that amendment about the bank signature as part of the motion.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda as amended. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Recognition time. All right, we have a bunch, and it's nice to see so many people here. First up, we have girls state golf. So if I had to pop up, would you come? And bear with us as we're getting used to this new space. So, Mr. Ising, does that mean we should stand over?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just lean into how awkward that is and come on over. That way, for folks watching, we may concede you, too. All right, so as everyone knows, not to recap everything, but this was our first year of having a girls' golf program. And so, you know, one is realistic about what those expectations might entail with a first-year program. We're really excited to be able to get that off the ground. And what people need to understand is when a new program is added, it really is a grassroots thing. So you have to give credit to those of you who worked so hard to bring that forward as a piece of awareness and as an opportunity for our school. Not only did they do all of that, but then have a great season and show that that is something that we have here and that it's possible. We also have two individuals who did very, very well. And so I'm going to present those certificates now. This is for the 2023 Acacia Foreay State Golf Tournament qualifier, which is amazing in your first year. It's incredible. And is your coach here tonight? Come on up. Yes, you're right there. Come on up, coach. You should be recognized, too. Yes, sorry. Sorry, but it's good. It's good. It's good. All right, I'm glad you were able to be here. And thank you again for just, hey, I'll take this on. It's year one, let's go, right? And it was a great season. Is there anything you'd like to say about the season or your golfers?
It was an awesome season. Just glad that I could be a part of it and have two really good golfers head to state. So, yeah.
Fantastic. All right, well, the Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, December 18th, 2023, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Carson Chambers. And Peyton Wright, who also placed fifth at state as freshman. Congratulations. Ms. Megan, I got a bunch. You already got one because you were on topic. All right. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have girls state tennis. Linda, would you like to come up? Tennis coach. Coach Gashcraft is here. Coach, anything you would like to say about the season as a whole or about this particular tennis player?
Lenny had an absolutely wonderful season. For those of you who don't know Lenny, she is our foreign exchange student from Sweden. She has fit right in with the team, the whole community, everything. One thing that I'm very proud of with this team is despite all of the setbacks of learning the sport, not just Lenny, Lenny knows the sport very well, but the team as a whole is recognized everywhere we go for having a very high level of sportsmanship and just being willing to have a good time. Coaches always comment on the fact that our girls are always following the rules and just being wonderful people. So I'm very proud of the fact that the entire community of Baldwin produces such high-quality, upstanding students, student athletes, everyone. And I'm very proud of the team for that.
Well, congratulations. And so now you get your certificate. The Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, December 18th, 2023, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates you, Lenny, and is it Hagman? Is that Hagman? Yeah. Hagman, I'm sorry. But as being a 2023 Acacia Foreay State Girls Tennis Tournament Qualifier. Congratulations. All right, now we're going to switch over to Northeast KMEAs. That's Kansas Music Educators Association District Qualifiers. And we have so, so many. So what I'm going to do, if you were in the elementary or junior high district qualifier, go ahead and come up. And even if you are not here, all of those kiddos will get a certificate. I'm so glad you are here. Yes, watch the cords. Yep. And just pile on in. And Ms. Jacobson's here. Do you want to come up with the kids? And is Ms. Norton?
Yes.
And that's okay.
I don't think it's.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, we'll kind of summary these out from the high school. Anything that you would like to say about any KMEA before we get started?
Any KMEA is the Northeast District, so it's our entire district of the Kansas Music Educators Association. And we have 42 students across elementary through high school, just in the choir that participated. So that was a really big deal.
Really big deal. And as evidenced by this staff, what is so awesome, this is not just something that our high school kids are doing or even our junior high kids are doing. This opportunity, thanks to Ms. Jacobson, this is something that is down into the elementary school. It's a really big deal. It's extra work. So, you know, you do your regular music class, and this is stuff that is above and beyond. And so it's a really big accomplishment. So good for you guys, okay? I'm going to read all of the names. I'm going to give all of the certificates to Ms. Jacobson. That way, everybody gets it, but I want to make sure every single name is read. Okay? All right. Charles Baker. Kaylee Barr. Rhonda Bench. I'm going to shake her hands when I'm all done, okay? I'll, we'll wait for you all to do it twice. Lake Brittingham. Laney Brittingham. Riley Brown. Naomi Daniels. Jacob Goodwin. Hunter Harding. Cheyenne Kane. Arwin Marsh. Zara Marsh. Elliot Morton. Tyler Moses. There you go. Annalee Neal. Emberlin Neal. Olivia O. Gabby Perez. Isabel Perez. Oakley Showen Dollar. Lakin Scott. Kinsley Scott. Grayson Spurgeon. Joshua Stewart. Maggie Stoltz. Amara Thomas. Isabel Tuckell. Claire Watkins. Emma Watkins. Leila Waley. Kendall Widener. Juliette Young. All right. Now, moving on to this staff, I'll just keep on going. Jay Baker. Abira Dublin. Isla Ellis. And Gillian McLaren. Saw Gillian. Go ahead, we're segueing to high school. Oliver Mead. There you go, Gillian. Casio Moses. Congratulations. Annette Perez. Nasi Osadan. Isaac Taylor. Talon Torres. Liz Underwood. Oh, hi, Isaac.
Bonjour.
Kira Westrobridge. All right. And you didn't get one. I'm so sorry. Oh, Cheyenne, I'm sorry. I just, I just, okay. Well, let me shake her hand. Okay, excuse me. We'll dig it out of this. Okay, so let's get a picture of all the district qualifiers. Megan, did you already get it? Perfect. All right, I'm going to read this all at the same time. And again, I want to congratulate. And now I don't know if you noticed as we were going through all the names of siblings that you heard. So that's extra work on the part of the entire family, making sure everybody's doing what they need to do, being there at the time, on the day, the travel, the extra effort. It's a real, it's a team effort with the teachers and the parents. So thank you all again. The Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, December 18th, 2023, the Board of Education wishes to recognize and congratulate each of you for your NE KMEA district choir participation at elementary, middle, and the high school level. Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. We have one more. You guys can go ahead and. Where's Rhonda? Come here, Rhonda. And Gillian. Okay, so can you talk about your elementary state selection that just, breaking news today? Not on the agenda. So you talk about that, and then we'll save this. Relax.
So the elementary kiddos have to submit an audition recording. We submitted around 30 tapes this year, but it's really hard to make it into that choir because it only takes about 150 singers, and they have well over 1,000 auditions this year. So we had three students that we just found out today made that state choir. Rhonda made it, as well as Emma Watkins and Juliette Young.
All right, thank you, guys. You can go ahead and take your seats. Then our final recognition, this one we knew about just as of Friday. So we thought, well, let's go ahead and do it. And this is the last, I'm pulling a selfish heart, this is the last time I get to do this, too. So I really, I really wanted to give Gillian this award. But Gillian McLaren, representing our high school, also found out on Friday that she earned the All-State designation as soprano I for KMEA. Gillian works very hard. I have taught her since she was nine years old in addition to everything else. And so I've known her for a really long time, and I know how hard she works. I know how much she cares about music. And she's taking it to the next level. So she has a very exciting music future ahead of her, but so much of that has come in the foundational effort and work that she's done for her school and also through other aspects, musically throughout the community. So the Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. On this day, December 18th, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Gillian McLaren for KMEA All-State Soprano I, and it could not be more deserved.
All right, so for our educational program highlight, I'd like to bring Nicole King as well as the Andrea Most family. They have, they've got a really fun presentation here about the primary student STEM night that took place at the primary center recently.
First of all, this is Andrea and this is your son Hudson, who's in second grade. Both were in attendance at our first STEM night that we had this year. For, I give them a chance to talk and maybe a little bit of information. This is the first STEM night that we've done. We've been kind of brainstorming different ways to get families to come into the building and participate with their students and staff or community members, however that they were. Last year, we were selected by Mr. Osborne for the America Farmer's Girl Community Grant, which has to be utilized with STEM projects. So Heidi Johnston, our librarian, and myself sit down, and we went through, and she picked out several different things that she's using within her library. Every Friday, they do a STEM day. Drew has been helping teach them those STEM items, as well to students. And then we took those items that they had purchased, and we brought them all out for the family STEM night and sent them out so that the parents could come in and do these activities with their students or with their children. To partner with that, we've also been working with Baker. Their sororities and their paternities need volunteer hours. So they had been reaching out to me last year to find out ways that they could come in and partner with us to get some of those volunteer hours done. So they started with this planning, came in, and I had members come in, and they put together STEM bags. So they took a whole bunch of materials back, and they all sorted them up into their bags, brought those back to me. So we had some of, as I was cleaning through things, we had some math manipulatives and extra things we didn't want to get rid of. So we repurposed those to provide those materials to students to take home. So they were base 10 blocks and attribute squares and like the little Judy clocks that they can use, different things that they could utilize at home. I purchased cards and dice for them to take, along with games that go with them that they can do in those activities. And then, so they got those bags, and then we had those STEM students or those Baker students that could come in and sit down, and they worked with the students as well. They helped me set up, they helped me clean up afterwards, kind of made the whole thing just run very effortlessly. Setup took about 10 minutes, and breakdown took about 10 minutes, and we were out of there. So I had chosen a couple that came to come and speak and talk about their experience with it as well. We're hoping to continue doing this and maybe bring in more population as work kind of gets out and keep doing these activities and maybe build upon it to get some families the ability to come in. One of my primary reasons for wanting to do this is we don't have clubs and sports and that kind of stuff within the primary center. So I want to kind of open up the doors a little more often to get families in and doing some of those things with us. So this was just kind of our first little step into that water. So, Andrea, if you guys would like to share your experience?
Yeah. It was a really fun night. I have three boys who are four, seven, and nine. And from the time that we stepped into the room, they were locked in on all of the STEM activities that there were. And to keep a four-year-old and a nine-year-old engaged in the same thing, that has to be good. That's quite a feat. I was impressed how many different things there were. I mean, I would, 20?
At least, and we didn't bring all of them out.
Okay. There was just so, so many different STEM kits to work with. I would say some of our favorites were some magnetic cubes that you could build with. I didn't look at the names of everything but playsticks where they're kind of notched all the way along, and you can kind of interlock them like you would Lincoln Logs. Some things even made it on Christmas lists, so.
I did have a lot of parents who kept asking me asking for items that they could get for Christmas.
Yeah, so educational and fun, something that the kids want to do at home. So I just love activities like this because they're fun, but then they give kids a chance to be creative. There's not one right way to do it. You can build so many different things, build again, build something different. Things probably aren't going to go according to plan along the way, so you have to rethink your plan and then also maybe get frustrated along the way and have to go back and try again. So I'm excited for the primary center to have these and for the kids to get to use them. I know they'll really enjoy it, well.
Hudson, what's your favorite thing?
You were looking at the magnetic cubes. I think you liked that one. Yeah.
Do you have one, because I know they weren't all out there. Do you have one during library centers that you really didn't like that wasn't out there?
Yeah.
Which one?
Like kinetic sand.
The kinetic sand, yeah. We have sand. They also had some programmable pieces as well, so they do some coding with it. We didn't bring those out, but we have those as well. This is just some pictures of some of the kiddos. And then I did put just a couple pictures of just a few. And this is a very small selection, but just a few of the items that we do have. So they definitely differ from. So they definitely differ from your old, like Lincoln Logs that you used to have and yeah, that you can do with them. So anyhow, thank you guys very much. Hudson, thank you for coming up here. Any questions you guys have? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for having the parent and student's voice in all your presentations because that's, that's really helpful. Not that we don't trust the administrator, of course, but it's nice to have that perspective in conjunction as well.
I want to say kudos to Hudson. It's, it's hard to get up here in general.
Yes.
And when you have somebody who's willing to come up and talk at the primary ages, it's volumes. So thank you.
It's very, very brave. I'm used to it and I get nervous every time, so good for you.
That's what I'm not on the way here, I was like, I'm gonna have to be brave.
Well, we really appreciate because it really does help board members to understand the impact that a particular program has by having that representation. So thank you guys for taking the time and coming tonight and sharing your perspective on how that went. All right. Thanks, everybody. All right, celebrating 348 student voices. Well, we kind of just did that, so we'll just say that was a two-for-one. Uh, there weren't any separate letters or correspondences that came in this month. Um, and so now we will move on to the hashtag Baldwin Built Employee of the Month portion of our agenda.
All right. All right, so what I wanted to do tonight is typically when I, when I provide the Baldwin Built Employee of the Month, I generally do it in such a way that I, I try to keep the winner somewhat anonymous here. But the way this nomination was written, it leaves no doubt. So I'm still gonna do it for the fun of it and just save a name for the end, but we all know that this individual is deserving. So and there'll be some, some foreshadowing that took place earlier in this board meeting. So, uh, tonight, the nomination of the December Baldwin Built Employee of the Month had the following to say. The establishment of an elementary choir has proved, uh, provided our younger students with a head start with vocal music, much like the elementary band had done for instrumental music. Our winner has worked with our local Baldwin Academy of Dance and Voice to provide crossover opportunities for students to experience music and nurture their love for it. All of these accomplishments demonstrate a devotion and commitment not only to her content area, but our school and district. The following is a list of the student accomplishments that are a direct result of our winner's teaching, leadership, experience, and directing. A BHS performance of Beauty and the Beast that far exceeded the expectations of a high school performance. And I'm just gonna sub, subway here, it was a, a, one of the best performances I've ever seen of, of a talented group of kids that is, uh, top-notch in terms of community and college-level theater. So they did a phenomenal job on that end. A fourth-grade music program that incorporated choreography and flashlights, two elements not easy to pull off with nine and ten-year-olds. And then KMEA state qualification for elementary choir, bringing a local vocal musician to perform jazz for the intermediate center students as part of a unit study. Her influence on the fine arts and success of USD 348 deserves to be recognized. So please help me congratulate and recognize your December Baldwin Built Employee of the Month, Ms. Katie Takersen. So I went into, uh, Katie's class today when I was doing walk, walk around and walkthroughs and I was in there watching and they were doing their, their, their vocal warm-up and going through the scale. And I was just watching how she did things and, and I, I walked out and left. And so she texted me, she's like, did you need anything? I was like, no, just came to watch you do what you do. But I will say, the next time I come in, you need to have this belt displayed. Yes.
We're supposed to wear it every day.
Well, that'd be great. So, um, thank you for all you do, the talents that you have as both a, a teacher and a mentor to our students that does not go unnoticed and the, the relationships that you build are evident when you come back to the high school to lead those high school performances. So this is welcome to her. Congratulations.
And Katie, on behalf of the Baldwin Education Foundation, and we'll get that to you, uh, tomorrow, uh, but paying a co-sponsored this employee of the month program. And so we also have a fifty-dollar little cash incentive prize for that, it goes, right? So you can buy like a whole outfit that matches this. So we will get that to you, but wanted to make sure that you knew that that was coming from you, to you from the Baldwin Education Foundation as well. So congratulations. Yeah.
All right, congratulations. On Friday, before we, uh, whenever we, we announce our winner, our term to our winner is we always try to do it on a Friday, come up with a fun way to let the individual know that they've won and invite them to the board meeting. And so this time I, I gave Katie's mom a call and said, you know, what are you doing? And she was like, getting ready to go to Target. I said, well, not an idea. How would you like to come to Baldwin and let Katie know she's won? She's like, I'm there. So on her way down, she picked up Katie's grandma, they came over and, and we crashed her guitar at last to let her know. So it was a lot of fun. So, thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item. Um, so this is the time in the recognition, uh, portion of the meeting where I wanted to take a moment and on behalf of the boards, provide some recognition and, and give some appreciation to four board members who have, uh, served our district and our community greatly. Um, and with thinking of, of trying to come up with a symbolic way to recognize and thank our outgoing board members, I kept coming back to our mission statement, which is preparing students to positively impact the world through academic, social, emotional, and behavioral success. And this is, this is our mission statement. And it's also what our district brand is and it's the hashtag we utilize within our social media platforms. And so with this in mind, we wanted to, uh, honor our outstanding board members for their unwavering dedication to the academic, social, emotional, behavioral success of our students as their official terms come to a close. And in symbolic nature, we wanted to recognize you with these mallets, which we have engraved with the hashtag Baldwin Built. Um, Mr. Harmon and his students, uh, and his Woods program, uh, took the engraving part uh, to their, to their finest and embedded that hashtag into these mallets for you to be able to put on display. Um, and we want, we want to provide this to you because we believe this symbolizes the important and hard and meaningful work of a board member to prepare students to change the world. Um, so at this time, I will provide you with your mallet as well as a stand. Kelly Bethel Smith. Tony Brown. Kelly Newfield. Andy Parks.
Can the kids make this?
Well, the kids do the engraving, I did the building, so if they fall apart. So, uh, I wanted to go into a little bit of a detail here with the symbolism. And those who know me know that I, I like to provide symbolism with a lot of, with what we do. And so what I wanted to do is describe, um, the, the mallets themselves and, and a little bit more into what they represent. The use of the, the wood Purple Heart, which is a strong, fibrous, and solid wood, symbolizes your strength in service and the pride you have in all that is USD 348, especially our schools and our students. The maple handle and the maple mallet stand represents the long and rich history of our beautiful community and the proudly supports and your proud support of our schools and our students. So on behalf of all of us, your board colleagues, and our staff and those in the room, I want to thank Kelly Bethel Smith, Tony Brown, Kelly Newfield, and Andy Parks for your leadership, your friendship, and your service.
Okay, let's go home. We survived.
Yes, as I was joking before, this is no dial-it-in December meeting, so we have important work to do. Thank you for that, um, very touching gift. That was very, very thoughtful. Okay. Um, excuse me, sorry. Do we have any public comment signed up? Okay. It is a Christmas miracle. Sorry. I couldn't resist. Okay. All right, so moving on to our, um, thank you for those who came also and say thank you, family members who came, um, friends, staff members who stood, uh, stuck around. Thank you very much. Um, but now we're getting ready to dive into an audit, so this is your chance to hit the escape hatch.
Former superintendent knows, I'm out of here.
Been there, done that, sir. All right. Uh, moving on to section F, financial report from Gordon CPA. This is our annual audit presentation. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Nobody can clear out a, uh, a room like an auditor. Um, so my name is Sean Ward with Gordon CPA. I'll go through the audit report that you have in front of you for fiscal year 2023. And we'll start with, uh, pages one through three. This is called the Independent Auditor's Report. Um, here in this section, we discuss the opinion that we issued on the district's financial statements, um, management and the board's responsibilities for the, uh, district's financial statements, and then a few more of our other responsibilities as auditor of the financial statements. Um, page one, the third paragraph down is the opinion paragraph. Here you'll see, um, uh, italicized heading, uh, labeled unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. Um, that opinion paragraph pretty much says that the highest and cleanest opinion we could issue the district's financial statements for the July 1st, 2022 through 6/30, 2023 time period, uh, we did issue that highest and cleanest opinion. So that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management of the district's um, accounting and finances during that time period. Uh, flipping forward to page four, this is called the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the district. And then, uh, for each of those funds, the beginning cash, uh, receipts, expenditures, and then ending cash. And you'll see at the very bottom of that right-hand column that the district ended with eight point five six million dollars on hand as of June 30th, uh, 2023. The next section forward starts on page five and runs through page, uh, thirteen. Uh, these are called the notes to the financial statements. Here we discuss a variety of, of different topics, including the accounting policies that the district follows, information on, uh, deposits and investments, involvement in the CAPR's retirement program, long-term debt, budgeted transfers, as I said, many items discussed in this section. Um, and then the next big section starts on page fourteen and runs through page forty. Uh, these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that you saw on page four. Um, here you'll see a comparison to, um, the prior year, which was fiscal year 2022. You'll also see, um, on most of those pages, a comparison to the budget that was adopted for those funds for fiscal year 2023. Um, and then the final section forward in your bound copy of the audit report starts on page forty-one and goes through page forty-eight. Uh, this is the government audit section. Anytime an entity receives and spends seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more of federal grant money, it's required to undergo what's called a single audit. For fiscal year 2023, we focus on the child nutrition grants that are recorded in the Food Service Fund. So we check for a variety of things, but mostly to make sure that the district followed, um, state and federal regulatory requirements for receiving and spending those funds. Um, and we can issue a variety of opinions, uh, on how the district manages that grant program. Uh, so fiscal year 2023, we issued an unmodified opinion, which again is the highest and cleanest opinion, uh, we can issue the district, uh, for that grant management. Um, and, and again, that just shows that the regulatory and financial management was, was, uh, exceeded expectations, met or exceeded expectations, um, for those, uh, regulatory requirements. Uh, we did not have any auditor's recommendations to communicate to the Board of Education for fiscal year 23. So again, that just shows that internal control management, um, and statutory managed, uh, statutory requirements were met by the district staff during that time period. Uh, we had a great audit. Nate and his staff did a great job of getting us everything that we requested and answering any questions that we had. Uh, so that is all I had. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Now, remember, do you move to accept or are we good?
We would need a motion to accept the, um, findings or the audit as presented by Gordon CPA.
So moved. Second.
Is that Tony?
Yep.
Okay. Andy has moved and Tony seconded to, um, approve the, or to accept the audit as presented by Gordon CPA. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Nate, thank you also to you and your team on that. Uh, moving on to administrative reports, food and nutrition update.
So last year, when we were, um, being at our internal review of food and nutrition and, uh, we continued to move forward with our internal program, uh, Charlie and her team had come up with a variety of ideas and suggestions to implement, um, with a goal of providing students with more access, more, more access to options as well as increased participation. And we said that we would do a mid-year, uh, kind of a breakdown to see how things are going. So, uh, I do, um, without providing a spoiler, I am very excited with how things have gone this year with our food nutrition program. And, uh, I'm gonna give Charlie the floor, who's excited to share this information.
So we've been pretty busy in the Food Service Department the first semester. Um, the staff has really stepped up. They've done great, taken on the challenges of new items, new ideas, shorting, short-staffing. Um, we did start out with full staff and we lost some, um, but we're, we're hoping to bounce back there with that, so. Um, so I'll just give you some ideas of what we've been doing, um, and what we said we could do in June. So, um, caterings, we've been picking up some caterings from Mr. Stavanas and, uh, forensic guys, so we do their hospitality rooms, um, to kind of keep the revenue in the school, but yet provide the food for the, the coaches and stuff. So we have been doing those. Um, and then, um, back in June, I said that we were gonna try to push out the fresh fruits and stuff. So, um, secondary level has fresh fruits and canned fruits out every day at lunch. All schools have them out for breakfast every day. They have a choice, um, of at least two different types of fruit that they can choose from at breakfast, so we are doing that. Um, uh, we have started the garden bars. They're not where, where I want them to be, which is considered my salad bar. Um, we, uh, are putting out everything that we can for the space that we have. So we are going to look at purchasing a new serving line for the high school to where we can extend those cold options so that we can have a larger salad bar. Um, I did purchase the salad bar from our local Pizza Hut when they took it out. Um, and I'm hoping to utilize that at the elementary, or not the elementary, the junior high, because I think that will also help there, because right now we're setting our fresh fruit up on top of the bar because we don't have room to do that. So, um, this is just kind of an idea of, this is kind of an idea of what we've got out now. We're hoping to have like at least fifteen small containers there with different types of fruit and veggies and everything in it, um, each day. So, um, here is the cold options that we offer at the, um, middle school. We did not do hot options yet because we just don't have the staffing over there yet. Um, but we do have anywhere from three to five options, um, every day on the cold side for them to grab if they don't like the hot option. Um, and then the high school, we, um, there's the middle school serving line. Um, the high- middle school serving line. The high school, we did start the second hot option, and they're going very, very well. We've put in some new items. We've got country fried steak sandwiches. I've started, we did a loaded not, or loaded fries, which the kids really seem to be taking to pretty well. We've done, oh, and we are making homemade lasagna instead of using the lasagna rolls. We just had that last week, and that's pretty good. And then I've introduced dumplings. So the days that we have Asian chicken for their second entree, they get dumplings. So it kind of ties into the same sides and stuff. So and then in January, we're going to be adding cowboy cavattoni, which is a new, it's also a state recipe, so that we're kind of staying on the state thing. So won't be starting second hot entrees at the junior high like I was planning on in January. Hopefully maybe towards the end of the school year, we can get that done. And just some fun things that we've been doing. So I didn't get pictures of this, but we had a pizza and wing day at the high school, and it went over crazy. It was, we went through 30 pounds of buffalo wings and 27 pizzas that day. So they really took it on. And so we're going to try to do it once a month or every other month, because that was a big, yeah, we couldn't stay up on the pizzas. But yeah, it was crazy. So and then at the primary center, I do have pictures of that one. We did, Mrs. Michael gives out pizza parties for when her kids get their reward bucket full. So in September, she come to me and says, we're not eating lunch in the cafeteria that day because we're having a pizza party. I said, mm, so let's take a look at that. So we put together to where the kids could make their own little pizzas. I bought individual pizzas for them, gave them hamburger, cheese, or pepperoni toppings. They got to make their own pizzas, and then we cooked them and served them to them at lunch. So we got to keep our reimbursable meals, and they got to have their pizza parties. So that's just kind of one of the things that we did there. Okay, so this is where I'm at here. And then we also, sorry, I lost my spot. Okay, we'll just go with it. Okay. So then we did farm to school grants, and then I've been working with that pretty hard. So we've been using fresh apples from South Baldwin Farms since the beginning of school, and we just got our last shipment right before Thanksgiving. So we have used nothing but farm fresh apples the whole entire time. We did the National Crunchout. We were part of that for the state of Kansas. And then we did, we also got some cucumbers from them and some squash and some zucchinis for our muffins and stuff. But and then we did corn on the cob. My staff wasn't real keen on this, because we shocked, even with Mr. Dodger's help there, 1,200 years of corn over like a two-month period. So we had enough corn that we could serve it on three different times, and the kids really did take to that. They thought that was pretty good. So and then we have our baker grant, which this is Misty making pizza crust. We're still waiting on one piece of equipment. They are just dragging their feet on it. So I have until February to get that grant in. So I'm hoping that that piece of equipment comes, because it's going to cut her time in half because it's a press to do her rolls and her hamburger buns and stuff. Right now, she makes a ball and weighs it and then adds or takes away every roll to make sure that we have. So this way, we can set what size we need and she can just press them out. So hopefully that comes pretty soon, because that's going to help her a lot. And then the last grant that we had was the farm to school meat grant, and I'm ahead of schedule on that one. Misty and I went and picked up 500 pounds of ground beef and 200 pounds of sausage links, pork roast, and ground sausage on Friday. So that's in our freezer. We're going to start using that in January. And then we are going to, on my want list, I've got hamburger presses. So I think I'm going to have enough money still to work some people during the summer, and I would like to go ahead and patty out our hamburgers and grill them and then freeze them. Then that way, it's quicker for us in the summer, but yet they're still getting, and I think they'll taste better. So anyway, so that's all of my grants. And as far as me, still have lots of training to do, lots of things to learn, but we're hanging in there. So thank you. Oh, yeah, I forgot that. Sorry. Okay, so. I know. So breakfast, I ran the numbers from August 16th to November 30th of last year and this year, and we're up 1,275 breakfasts and we're up 3,660 lunches from last year. So thanks.
For what could happen. And we oftentimes here, as a board, make sure all the money in the school district is going into the into the classrooms. I think it's important for us to remember that food services is as much a part of the school district and as much part of the educational program as what happens in a second grade classroom. So thank you very much. It's more than just making sure that kids aren't hungry when they're at school. It's about teaching them how to eat a nutritious and healthy diet. And you are making great strides in that effort. So thank you. Thank your team for all the all the work that you put in this year.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just piggyback on terms. The kids seem genuinely very excited about, especially the new items that are coming, like the, also, if you could let the board know when Chicken Wing Day is going to happen again. I really appreciate that. I saw the pics online. Like, I mean, the kids are just really stinking excited about all the new food options and coming home, like at least to my house anyway, and bragging about the food they got to have. And so thank you for that part.
Definitely. It's always fun to volunteer other people. So you could, I mean, I'm not going to be here, but it could be like a package deal. If you shuck corn, you can have wings, you know, see how you could maybe. Thank you very much. CTE, visioning and programming.
So last year, as you'll recall, about this time, we started the process of getting an idea of what students were interested in when it came to call a career technical education. So we conducted a survey, and we had Mr. Brittingham come up, he and Mr. Bland, and they started sharing some of their data and their findings. This summer, we challenged Brandon High School team to start looking at the career technical education programming that we offer, and with the idea of let's develop a five-year vision. The idea behind that is we're looking at when kids are eighth grade now, when they, by the time they graduate, what are we looking for? What are they needing? What are we wanting? And as we do that annually, we'll always have that cycle and that process. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brittingham and Ms. Hefner to.
Hey Drew, can I stand in front of that screen, or do I need to be? Okay. Real quick, I can speak to the new food service. My visique can speak to that. I find myself often going down at lunch and partaking. So sincerely kudos. It is good. So, okay, so as Mark already alluded to, we were tasked with basically creating like a five-year vision. And what I wanted to do first was just kind of give us a general timeline of how we arrived at where we're at right now. So in 2012, CTE pathways were established by KSTE, all right? Fast forward, obviously, some time has elapsed, but in 2022, the fall and winter, remember, we sent out a survey to basically all six through seniors on possible CTE pathways and areas of interest, which led us to the spring of 2023, when we got the addition of an act science position as per the results of that survey. Also in spring of 2023, the addition of the intro to law and the current social studies course offerings, and looking at establishing that pathway a little bit further. Bring us to this past summer, where we basically put together our team, which included all of our CTE teachers in the high school, myself, Mrs. Hefner, counselors, curriculum director, Ashley Trough, Drew Ising sat on that, where we really started to like dig into the nuts and bolts of what we were doing, which then leads us to obviously December 2023, our presentation right here to y'all, and what that means for Baldwin High School. I know you've seen this before, but I always want to reiterate. So if we go back to like 2012, when they first laid the, you know, the groundwork, they created this sunflower. And if you look at the sunflower, you notice that it has seven, seven career fields, right? Health, design, production, repair. Each one of those represents a couple on the sunflower. If you notice then, they started going a little bit deeper. They established 16 clusters. So in some of those fields, right now, there's only one cluster, and periodically then they'll add clusters to those fields. So if you count those, you have 16 clusters, and within those career clusters, then they add the pathways. So if you look, for instance, if we take health science, within this cluster, there's three pathways, biochemistry, biomedical, and then health science. All right. I stole this from the career cluster handbook that's on KSTE's website, because people will still ask after so many years, they don't understand what CTE is really trying to do. And I think this summarizes it to a T. CTE is organized educational activities that offer a sequence of courses that provide individuals with rigorous academic content and relevant technical knowledge and skills needed to prepare for further education and careers in current or emerging professions. Okay. So then basically, all we're doing is we're taking our core sequencing, right, we're aligning it to this, to these course offerings, and then so that we just provide some rigor so that it can lead to certifications and those sorts of things. Okay. So here's what our CTE team did. Kelly said, hey, she had been part of a protocol at a previous district called Back to the Future. So we went back to when we all first were a part of CTE, all of these teachers, we said, what did it look like back when we first run this, you know, whether, depending on where they were at in their tenure. So then we said, what do we want this to look like in the future? Right. So then what our job that we first were tasked with was connecting the past to the future. So here are the things that our team really dug in and kind of pinpointed and were common themes. We wanted to offer introductory, technical, and application-level courses, brick and mortar for each pathway, three units for completer status, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment. We really looked at course sequencing, because that will change from year to year. And if you don't really pay attention, you'll miss something, and then you'll have to go back and make some changes there. I failed to mention Mr. Bland. I think it was two years ago that we got common bell schedules, which then allowed eighth graders to come into our building. And then we also send some students down there for courses. But it's basically allowing, right now, students to come up as eighth graders and take our introductory course offerings. I use my daughter as an example. She'll be taking to introductory courses in AV communications, digital media pathway, next semester as an eighth grader. We wanted to look at three or four-year semester by semester pathway plans. So we give basically kind of like two tracks, I guess you could say. Emphasis on student achieving attainable certifications, and then workplace experience in each pathway. All right. So we'll try to make a little more sense of that as well. I want to know, one of the things that we also looked at, if we try to model like what some of the bigger districts do, they've put together some really good four-year plans, right, where if you're really interested, you get in those basically as a freshman, which then ends with some workplace experience. Those are usually their academies. But we said, hey, why can't we create something similar and at least try to map that out for students? So if they were really, really interested in something, they could get in there as a freshman. But we also recognize, right, hey, we're a four-year high school. We're big enough to offer a lot of opportunities, but small enough that we can't offer everything. Right. So here's what the vision really is. It hinged on three things. And I first want to point out what FTE, FTE means. That's just full-time equivalency. Think about it like this, we're a seven-period day. So our teachers, like full-time equivalency would be seven sevens. We have some teachers that teach five sevens. And so really, we just wanted to maximize those seven periods that they're here. Obviously, one of those is devoted to plan period. So then we're maximizing those six periods that they're here during the day. So anytime you basically see FTE, just think of that as periods in the day. Okay. We also wanted to look at, so we wanted to be efficient in that regard. We wanted to be extremely strategic and effective. And then we also wanted to enhance future programming. Okay. So what does efficient use of FTE mean? So there's basically two scenarios. I'm going to use our first scenario, business finance and business management. So the first thing we wanted to look at, if a teacher was responsible for multiple pathways, we wanted to make a determination if we could meet the needs of both pathways through course scheduling, or if we needed to go a separate route. A good example of that is Bronte Batman. She's responsible for business finance and business management and entrepreneurship through two separate pathways. Tyler Wolf does teach an introductory level course, usually one to three sections of Business Essentials. So once we really dug in, there was a lot of overlap between those two pathways. So we made the determination, hey, it makes sense. We can continue with these. So then we just need to look a little more in depth as to offering some application level and workplace experience type of opportunities for kids. The second example is that we asked, would students be better served by offering one pathway with more sections of a certain class, including more course offerings in a given pathway? So I take Kaylee Tannenhill. She's responsible for our Family and Consumer Sciences. She currently does restaurant and event management. And then she's also responsible for a pathway titled Family, Community, and Consumer Services. And so what we looked at there, and she had some exposure in a previous district, and what we're trying to do through facilities and upgrades. We took Culinary Two from two semesters to one semester, which is recommended by that pathway design sheet. And I'll show you an example of that. But what that allows us to do is if we run, let's say, just for simplicity, instead of getting 20 students through Culinary Two now, we can get 40 kids through Culinary Two, and then we can eventually get more kids into Culinary Three. So right now, we have six kids in Culinary Three. Eventually, we want to push that to 12. We want to push that to 18, so that we can get more kids involved. And then what we also decided to do is we want to add baking and pastry one and two. So if you go back to the FTE, we've kind of reduced the number of sections in one of our pathways, Family, Community, and Consumer Services. But as a result, we're going to add courses like baking and pastry. So they'll have that culinary experience, which is more just, you know, the culinary side of things than obviously baking and pastry. Okay. Any questions so far? I'm talking as fast as I can without, because Mark's trying to keep me on a time crunch. I could go on and on. So, okay. So what did we mean when we were talking about strategic and effective use of FTE? So we wanted to make sure that we had one introductory course, one technical level course, one application level course. But we needed that to add up to three units, because there's something at the state level, completer status, that goes along with getting certification. And so the one thing that we really looked at was application, brick and mortar. And I kind of, I kind of called this the Tom Harmon effect. And what I mean by that is, students want to take Tom Harmon's class because they build that relationship. We have the ability to kind of, for lack of better terms, outsource some of our application level courses. But in the end, we've really found they want to be with their peers, and they want to be with that person like Tom, you know, where they built that relationship with. And so we really tried to dig in, maximizing our FTE, but then finding out that we have the ability to add some application level courses. An example of where, like when we, like I said, when we dug into it with Tyler Wolf and our computer program and the software development, we were going to add a cybersecurity course. Okay. So that will be our application level course, brick and mortar. So we had the ability to do that in some of our pathways, and in some of the others, like a health And in some of the others, like health science, we're still sending kids to do things through the OSHA and so forth. So eventually, that will lead to some things that Kelly will talk about in terms of staffing. I just wanted to point this out real quick. This is what a pathway design sheet looks like in KSTE's Cluster Handbook. The reason I just wanted to talk about this, you can see there's three levels of courses, introductory, technical, and application. Here's where it gets a little bit interesting. If you notice, like Business Essentials, it's half a unit of credit. So basically, that point five is saying that it's a semester. It would be very easy for us to just say, okay, we're going to offer this introductory level course, we're going to offer business management, and then we're going to come over and offer a application level course, business management, and entrepreneurial workplace experience. But if you add those up, that only gives us two full units. What the state is wanting you to do is have three units total. So that's where we have to get a little bit more creative because now we have to say, okay, well, we're going to offer Business Essentials, we offer Business Management, we offer Entrepreneurship, we offer accounting, we offer a lot of courses in the supportive Entrepreneurship strand. And then now can we weave in somewhere an application level course so that we get to that kind of magic number of three? So that's where it gets a little more difficult because just on the surface, you said, well, yeah, we can do all that. But if we try to get to the goal of three units for completer status, it gets a little more difficult. So then one of the things we asked teachers to do before they left for Maple Leaf Weekend, we basically took our, the courses that we offered, and we mapped those out semester by semester and then year by year. It looks, it looks a little bit fussier than it really is, but if I'm really interested in business, right? And maybe we've had some students that have come through that have been wildly successful in Entrepreneurship, maybe Mrs. Batman had a hand in that. But if that's something they knew they wanted to do, then they could enroll their freshman year in Business Essentials, either the first semester or the second semester. Year two, then they could certainly pick from any of these courses that we offer. Year three, and so on. And then year four, the goal would be if they got into that as a freshman, we would look at a management, entrepreneurship, workplace experience. Okay? So we certainly have like a three-year track and then that would give us a completer status. And then obviously, we have a four-year track where they could really dig in and hopefully get them out to the community with some sort of partnerships. All right?
So I think when we, when we think about enhancing these programs, like that's where the visioning part really comes into play, like where do we want to go? And, you know, when we talk to our teachers, they have amazing plans. And what it always boils down to is how can we do it? How can we be strategic? How can we make this happen with what we currently have and what do we really need to make this continue and progress positively for our kids? And so, you know, that's something that we also look at every year is how can we continue to have these programs, but also then what do we need in order for these to continue? So staffing is always going to play a role in that. And we look at our law and public safety courses that we've started, and we want to continue. They've been a huge hit, but we're going to have to look at strategically at that three-year staffing plan. How do we then bring in additional FTE to be able to continue to support that? Making sure that we can diversify those offerings, again, goes back to that staffing option as well. So it's really important, and this is the benefit of having this three-year staffing plan, that all aligns, it's kind of like all the stars showing up all together and aligning perfectly. That's, in order for these programs to continue to grow, we do have to look at what we're going to need in the future. The other side of that is improving those facilities. And the district strategic plan that we have outlined with that emphasis on improving our facilities definitely goes hand in hand with continuing to enhance these programs and thinking about what they will look like in the future. And when we think about, you know, these new pastry classes, currently, the setup we have in our culinary classroom is not as ideal for being able to do some of these really cool things that Charlie and her team get to do actually in the kitchens that we have. So that's fun, though, like see, this is where, you know, this is the different things we want our students to be able to experience, a different machinery that we want to have available for them to try out. So improving our facilities is a part of that. And then just increasing those partnerships. We have, we meet every year with our advisory team that come in to support the different pathways that we already have established, but trying to figure out how we can continue to build those and dig deeper with those and get those kids out there for those workplace experiences is incredibly important to us. So in case you're sitting here wondering, back to the sunflower, where do we currently stand? The top three numbers that you see here is what the state says there is. There's seven fields, 16 clusters, and 36 pathways. Currently, Baldwin High School has seven fields. We have different, or 12 different clusters being done. And then within those clusters, we have 13 different pathways. But where do we want to go? We want to be able to add something in every single cluster so that we can eventually get to a point where we have seven fields, 16 clusters covered, and at least 16 pathways, but wouldn't we find to see us go even further than that? So we get a dream. And our teachers are ready, they're excited, our students are ready. We saw that in the data that we got last year from our, the survey that we did. And ultimately, we are excited to partner with you guys and to continue to grow this. So if we can answer any questions, we'd be happy to.
What do we do on time, Mr. Dodge?
Yeah, how do you do?
Kelly was more efficient.
Okay, okay, fair, fair. All right, I won't, that's fine, that's fair.
About how many percentage of kids actually pursue a pathway complete that?
I, you know, I was gonna, we always at our advisory team meeting in the fall, we kind of break it down by numbers. I think we at least, and I'm basing this just off first semester. Because that's when we pull numbers on September 20th for count day to submit to the state for funding and all those purposes. We're at about 70% of kids that are in like first semester that were in at least one pathway course.
Right around 300 and some.
I did see, just the other day, as I was digging into this, and I can share it at some point, but it stopped in about 2015, 2016. So I'd be curious as to where the data's at, but it's the number of complete, the number of certifications that are being obtained in all the different pathways. It wasn't as high as I thought it would be, but that's something that Mr. Dodge and I have talked extensively about, obviously, is how can we increase the number of certifications? And I think that really goes back to this, with the size that we are establishing application level courses, right? That we don't have to outsource and then finding certifications that are attainable. Because there are some certifications that when you dig in, I remember there was like one Tyler Wolf and I were talking about that dealt with some sort of computer programming certification, and I think it was 120 seat hours. Well, that's just going to be a course that is nothing, that's solely devoted to that. So I think that answers your question. That's kind of what we're trying to dig into, like where can we establish those application level courses and then embed attainable certifications in those courses?
Define strategy or process from a district level to support instructor certifications to support the future of the CTE pathways?
If you go, the short answer is yes. Actually, Mr. Dodge does a very good job of sending out emails and opportunities for certifications for our teachers. And I know that in the past, the district has picked up the tab for that. I mean, that's part of why the state funds it additionally. They recognize that it might require additional certifications for teachers. I'll use facts, for example. They have to go out and get their Safe Serve certification and then do all the things that they need to do in order to then have kids do that. So to answer your question, yeah. I don't know if there's something that's, you know, explicit, but we certainly provide that opportunity for teachers.
In terms of investing in this future plan, can you remind me again? I know it's going to change. The state is not going to be footing the bill for certifications. And I can't remember when that is, but that's just something for future folks to keep your eye on as you make decisions about, I mean, you can't just say, well, yeah, let's do that. We have, you have to fund it. And so that's going to be part of it that's going to need to be an important thing to keep the eye on.
When a student wants to take a certification test, it's the district's responsibility as of last summer.
It didn't used to be.
Which we had, we had a number of students that were got, were taking their, sitting for their OSHA certification that we covered, so.
And the more certifications that, which we want.
Yes.
Again, that's just a budgetary item that we, we want to be able to handle.
We just had three kids take their paraprofessional certification, and that was an exciting one, but that's, you know, I think it was 110, 90 to 110 B's. So just, yeah, it's exciting, but yeah, it's the money.
Anything else?
I mean, the reality is, we could go on and on.
Don't let him.
I won't, I promise I won't.
That's great information. Thank you very much. It's very, and it's exciting.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect segue into old business. Are you guys up for getting through old business before we have a restroom break? Okay. So one of the things they just mentioned is just talking about how we continue collectively to keep our eye on staffing and facilities, and those are our next two agenda items. So first up is bond study and facilities update.
All right. So over the last couple of months, we've, we've had a variety, a couple of subcommittee meetings with, included DLR and Lloyd. And what we were looking at is, you know, what are, what are some options here looking at moving forward? So on November 9th, we had a subcommittee meeting. We had representatives from DLR and Lloyd. And through that meeting, what we decided as, as the group, the conversation that took place was just that renewed focus on the importance of CTE and safety and security. That was the driving force or the driving factor of the last attempt. And looking at the feedback that we received as well as looking at the needs and listening to our staff, the CTE and safety and security was kind of that, that topic of conversation moving forward. And through that conversation, there was a CTE work session that was held on November 30th with DLR and Lloyd. And we brought in our three CTE teachers that, whose programs would be impacted there. So we're looking at Mr. Harmon, we're talking about Macy Osquinson with FFA, and Kaylee Tannenhill for culinary. Along with those, we had Brent and Kelly there, BHS administration, myself, I was there, Kelly was there, Mike and Nate were there, and we invited a couple of our newer board members, Jamie Cox and Lacey Kelman. And DLR and Lloyd led a day-long reflective conversation and just really listened to the needs that were there. And in going with the idea of, you know, if we are going to focus on, if we need to look at focusing on CTE, safety and security, what does that look like? How can we look at this item here and go and do what's best here and really focus on that? And with the idea of maximizing the opportunity and potential that's there. From that, the subcommittee met again on December 11th, where DLR and Lloyd brought back their initial ideas and their scope that took place based on the conversations from that CTE work session. And it was following a conversation also that Nate and I had with Dustin Abbey the following day, looking at what, if we go through this and we are really focused on what would be considered a male neutral option, if the board were to look at that and focus on investing with the CTE programming and safety and security, what could we do to leverage that opportunity to really hone in and put together something that would speak to the vision that Brent and Kelly are working with their staff to create, as well as look at a mechanism that would allow the district to reinvest over time to make sure that we're continuing to move the needle forward and providing our students and staff with the safest and most responsive educational experiences that were there. And then on the 13th, Nate, Kelly, Newfeld, and Kelly Bethel Smith and I got on a conference call to kind of debrief that, that piece. And which leads us to all this information coming to what would be a special board meeting, which needs to occur between or before January 8th. So there's the Cinderella cloth that strikes midnight with the idea that this, that's, that's when this current sitting board's official term ends in that sense. So the idea there would be a work session where this board would, would take place again before the 8th. We would invite our new board members to be part of that conversation, to really go over all of this, to go over the plan, to go over some of the options that were there funding-wise, to see what takes place. And then, you know, from that, if the board were to decide to proceed moving forward, a resolution would occur at a regular meeting in January or February with the intent to proceed with, with an election. But the focus is, the conversation was centered around, how can we leverage male neutral and maximize the CTE opportunities and experiences and space so that we can focus on lab space and classroom space for three, if not four, programs? Kelly, Kelly, Phil, how did I do? In a nutshell.
Great. Do you guys have anything to add?
No, I think it's just that we were trying to be very responsive to what we heard back from, like what seemed to be the overwhelming desire of the community was like, hey, we really need the CTE stuff, and maybe we're not really interested in doing the other stuff right now. So I think it was, we really kind of focused in on that.
Kelly, anything?
No, I'm eager to have that special meeting so that we can dive into it. I think, I think there's a lot of information to share and DLRs and Lloyd are collaborating on working on getting information visually ready for that. And so it's all kind of just needed discussion.
And to be clear, the purpose of this work session would not be to vote on a resolution. None of that would happen until the new board, if it happens at all, until the new board is installed. The purpose of the work session is to go into greater detail in a transitional attempt, like, hey, we've, you know, normally you don't, I don't make more than one thing for dinner. You know, you eat it or you don't eat. There are special times when it's important to maybe have two or three entrees on the burner because maybe, you know, this was one of those times where it was important for us to keep, keep things going, multiple things going on the burner, being thoughtful about that timing so that there were options. By doing nothing, by default, would have been making a decision, as we've explained before, and we certainly didn't want to do that. But that would be the explicit purpose of that work session would be to dive into greater depth on all of that so that new board members can see all that and ask questions of current ones.
And to make sure that this isn't Andy and Tony's last meeting.
Yeah, that too. That was just an added bonus.
I know they were coming, Andy figured that.
He's going to hit you with his hammer. Careful.
And we know people aren't necessarily looking for another meeting, but two of the bond subcommittee members will be going off, and we just want to make sure that we, it's worth putting in the extra time to make sure that we are, like I say, stirring the pots and then it'll be the new group's decision to decide which one is, which one, if any, at all. But at least you have those options that are available.
It's kind of a passing of the baton in a way for our bond subcommittee, and I think it'll just be good to have that focus, and it won't be all night. Whereas if we tried to include it into this, we'd be here till.
Yeah. So calendaring.
Yeah, I was going to ask, when does school start again after the 8th?
So the fourth is a teacher work day, and then the fifth is a collaboration day.
So is the fourth okay?
So clarification here. The exiting board members, your last day is on the 8th, or is it the 9th?
According to K-
According to KSB, the last acting day would be the 8th.
Okay. As prior to that.
Yeah.
Well, that means you can still do it on the 8th. They're, they're still working on the 8th. You just can't, you couldn't do it on the 9th.
Before midnight?
Yes.
So we know we have a cutoff.
Cinderella.
Cinderella. Are we, are we sure that we can have it on the 8th?
When, yeah, when I, when I, my communication with Dr. Hart was, he said before the 8th.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so that's fine. We can scoot it before that. I just wanted to be clear.
Were you pushing for 11:00 PM on the 8th?
Eleven fifty-nine.
People stand up and they move.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's up for. The hammer gets passed over. Uh, no, I, I think probably that week before is, yeah, couldn't be our best option. Like the 3rd, 4th.
3rd or 4th, I would not recommend the 5th.
Right, right.
Is the 4th, is that, with it being a teacher work day and thinking about all that, is that, would you have a preference on any of that?
Nope, I, I wouldn't. There, there is a wrestling meet on the 4th. Let's see, the 3rd does not, that does not have anything on the 3rd.
Is it JV meet, I think, on the 4th?
It could be.
Memory.
Yeah.
I don't know why I would know that. I feel, I feel like I remember because we were talking about this.
Yeah, it could, it could be.
The 3rd would be fine, too.
Yeah.
To eliminate that from being an issue.
And we need, we need current board, future board members to attend that, MN team, or is this just more of a?
I see nothing wrong with having, having them here if they're, if they're available.
And obviously it's an open public meeting, so it just happened. It's just, it's work meeting, it's different, there's no actual motions out of that.
No, no decisions will be made there.
Okay. So the 3rd sounds the best.
Kind of like what we did in the summer when we had the special work session, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And, and they're helpful. Just, I think it's good to clarify that there can't be motions out of that type of meeting.
Correct.
I mean, other than starting the meeting.
Opening and closing, yeah.
You can't, you can't make any board action with that.
Correct.
Set that.
The 3rd, it's, uh?
It's a Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm telling.
Six thirty, what do we want?
That works.
Six thirty?
Yep. And somebody will let the new folks know. I know we have two here, but yeah. Write it down as well. You guys, you may be faultless part, too, yeah.
Yeah. Will we stream that meeting? That may be, I don't know if, I don't know that we did the other work session.
We didn't the other one.
I'm just, you know, because people don't come back for duty until the 4th, right?
Right.
And I just want to be mindful about people's time when that's there. Yeah, right? So, okay, as much as we can. Sorry, Megan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have our backup.
Okay. Oh, good. That'll be, okay. So that's, but that's doable to have a clerk, and we've got coverage on that.
We will.
We will. Okay, we'll figure it out. Okay. All right, so January 3rd, Wednesday, January 3rd at 6:30 PM. Great. Thanks, guys. Okay, three-year staffing plan.
So what, what I've provided for you in board docs is the copy of the three-year staffing plan from our previous meeting. What I wanted, wanted to share there is, oh goodness, where did I go? So the, the focus right now for 2425 is the maintaining of the expiring grant funded positions. So our ESRA positions as well as our KDHE grant positions. All the four positions that were there in terms of student success, all four of those teachers have worked themselves into an incredible resource that is extremely valued within their staff and by their administration. And so the focus is on maintaining those positions. The social worker at the junior high, which was, it was, I put in there that it's formerly an ESRA position because this year we were able to move that position into at-risk. And so it's, it's no longer dependent on ESRA funds there. So that position itself is covered. The remaining health aides and nurses that we have are part of the KDHE grant. They're also worked themselves into a position that there is a, an incredible, a great need to make sure that we have health aide staffing at every building. And so we want to be able to maintain the coverage that we've got. Some feedback that came through, projections that, that I have now that we did not have at the last meeting. The projected estimate for the per-student funding, which this year is 5,088, the Gannon ruling which states that it needs to be a three-year average of the Consumer Price Index in terms of an increase. We should be looking upwards of 5,300 and some change next year. When you take that dollar amount against the number of students that we increased this year, which we'll actually get to use next year when we build our budget, that amount itself almost covers the cost of these positions there. And that's not even taking that raise per student against our entire student body that's there. So I feel very confident in the maintaining of these positions themselves and being able to, to, to maintain where we've got so that we can provide them with that, that security of knowing that we're, we can move forward with this. They're all critical, they're all valued, and then they, they provide a great asset and resource. And with that, I will also tell you that the ELA teacher at the high school, I put in there is sufficient funding from the state is provided. I will tell you with the, the new requirements for, for graduation that are coming down at the state within their 21 credits, they're, they're wanting three and a half to be focused and transcribed at ELA with a point five credit, transcribed in some form of communication. We've got a couple of teachers that are teaching in overage. And what that jargon means is they're basically being paid to teach during their plan time. And they are, they are covering a large student body to do so. We've got 130-plus kids coming up from eighth grade into the freshman class next year. So there, that's going to be an added tax to the, or an added burden to the ELA class size. There, the, the need for ELA teacher at the high school, it's, it's either there because we need to respond to student population, or it's there because we need to respond to the, the shift within the, the courses we need of our students that graduate. In either case, that impacts this year's eighth graders, because that new graduation requirement has to be there by the time they're eighth graders. So what I, what I want to, why I keep that in green, why I, at this point in time, I want to say the sufficient funding is because of this. With the legislature making their funding decisions in April and May, you know, there, there's, there's, there's talk that there, there could be a cap on the assessed valuation. And if that, if that cap is, is low, then that, that means we've really got to look at the finances before we go there. If that, if they decide to make any changes to the general fund, which currently is levied at 20 mils, if they decide to say, let's move that down to 16 mils, then that also creates some, some of that economic side of things. So while I believe that the funding will be there, I just, I'm not ready yet at this moment to, to make that one a definite there. But I want to leave it there with the idea, and I talked to Brent and Kelly, that this may be a, an April or May item where we say, okay, let's go. So what I put in there for that particular position, when we're looking at salary, that, the salary that's listed there is, is the information based on this year's current rates. If the, the crystal ball that I'm looking at right now shows that, you know, changes aren't going to be made in terms of the, the 20 mils or the, the capping of our assessed valuations, then I think we'll be able to accomplish this and still provide our staff with a raise. But it may not match what we've been able to do this year. But at least from a negotiation standpoint, we'll be able to, to make sure that we take care of our staff. What I also want to do is, is if you look at 2526, and because this is that three-year plan, looking ahead and, and how this connects to what Brent and Kelly were talking about, in 2526, there's a health sciences teacher that they, they might be looking at, needing to add. We've got public safety and corrections teacher. That right there, that's actually a history, that could be, that's part of that history, social studies government. Which, again, if you think about the number of kids that are coming up in eighth grade, it's, it's going to be a lift that they'll, they'll need to have experienced as well, so. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Not really a question, more of a comment, but always start with a comment right there. I know that we took a bit of a risk using the ESRA's funds in the first place to allocate towards these positions. It's, you know, tying positions to grant funds is always potentially problematic. But I'm, I'm really excited to hear that there is a, somehow it's actually working in our favor for once here, which is a really good sign here. Because I'd say each of these positions we're talking about here has been absolutely pivotal to our operations the last three years. I can't think of the time I've stepped into the schools in the last three years where there hasn't been six kids in the nurse's office each day. So it's been, it's been a hectic time, and, and these folks that are on this list here are, have been hugely beneficial to our kids.
100% agree, and then I'll tell you, you know, one of their, one of their most important roles that they do, and it's, and it's secondary to being able to assist students when they're sick, is to be able, able to provide the medication that students need throughout the day. That is, that is a, a thing that is, is important, and it's regular and it's routine. And when there's a lot going on within that office, when a secretary tries to step in and do that, there's an even greater appreciation for that side of things, knowing we've got those healthcare professionals that are there that, that can make sure that our kids are getting the medications that they need, handle the kids who are sick, and then also help respond when, when crisis happens. So, absolutely.
And help with bus duties sometimes.
And, and some credit, and I want to make sure to be, one major piece to this that really did help make this happen here is the ability to utilize at-risk funds within the social. That, that kind of started getting this ball rolling. And that is a large part to the work that took place with our Food Nutrition Service when the efforts that were made to make sure that we were helping our families with those free and reduced meal applications that took place in the work that Charlie did to really communicate with families and help that. I mean, that was a, that was a big, a big assist in that.
So if we move to approve, as we're approving that, that number one section on the document, we're, we're holding off on the ELA teacher until.
Right.
More information?
Yes.
Because you can't post it until we.
Right, right. So what, what my recommendation would be is to, to approve the staffing plan with opportunities to modify based on state funding or, and student enrollment.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion. I, I move that we approve the USD 348 staffing plan with opportunities to modify based on state funding and student enrollment.
Chris moved, Phil seconded, to approve the three-year staffing plan as presented with the ability to modify as other pieces of information are available. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Seven zero. Call a brief recess.
Thank you.
Responded to it.
No, I agree.
That that'd be an amazing response rate, first of all. But then 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 we could do the math on that and sort of say, well, maybe, you know, fifteen to twenty percent of the of the population in Baldwin City or in the Baldwin City School District, maybe they really aren't students.
No, I agree.
And it and the other thing that I would say, Kelly, I appreciate your vision for making an elite program that would be that would be a leader in the in the field. But I think it's difficult to to patch that kind of thing together using current personnel and having them work on this besides the jobs that we've hired them to do. And so I'd be concerned about doing that. If we were really going to go in this direction, I would say we've got to we've got to make a full-blown effort effort to do it with the vision of trying to make it the best the best program in the area to, as you suggest, to attract students.
And I'm not necessarily, the timing might not be now. And that's. No, and that but I guess I'm just in general would like to encourage our district to keep that as a as an opportunity, you know, on the on the to to continue to revisit and consider potentially because I I do think since COVID, there's been a changing landscape of more and more interest in doing that. And and there's there's kids that are participating in our district's program within our district that that maybe, you know, so there's I think there's more data that could be, you know, you know, studied to consider the opportunity.
Satisfaction survey, if like, are those folks who are participating in the Greenbush program content with it or happy with the program?
And it's it's to the point you're talking about here, we're not, we're not asking to close the door on it. What we're supposed, what the team would like to do is is look at this again in a couple of years. It's we're not sure that now's the time for for that. There there are some challenges. It's one of those, what I love about our district is the opportunities that we try to provide for our kids. And when they graduate Baldwin High School, they graduate with a Baldwin High School diploma, whether they're brick and mortar or whether they go through Greenbush Virtual. So that means they're also part of of our activities. And when we make that decision, that is, to me, that's an investment in the opportunities that our kids get to to take. But that also means when an online student is is taking is participating, they take that brick and mortar class, then that's that's the take, there's the financial impact on that. But again, it goes back to providing opportunities for kids. And to me, that's where, looking at this right now, don't know that now's the time. We are, our admin team has said, we don't want to close the door on it. We just like to try to look at this in a couple of years.
So in the meantime, would the plan be to continue to offer and to contract through Greenbush so that wouldn't be disruptive? I do know for a fact, we've kept students and provided the opportunity for them. I I just know it. It we've, because of of embracing this, it has allowed kids that we want to be Baldwin Bulldogs to continue to be Baldwin Bulldogs, but shift in the educational manner that just happened to work for them. So I'm glad that it's going to continue to be studied. But, you know, make no mistake, it's a huge, it it would be a huge financial investment because what I think might be different, and I totally hear what you're saying about, you know, even if even if a future board decided like, yeah, we really want to pursue this, because it involves accreditation, unlike a program that maybe can afford a head coach, and then it grows, and now you need an assistant coach, there's not a lot of wiggle room about the the positions that you have to make sure are in place from day one. So it's just one of those things to to keep in mind, but I'm glad to hear it's going to be a continued opportunity.
And I agree with everything everybody's saying. And I guess I, one of the things a couple of years ago that was said to me, and I kind of came, you know, when I when I came to sit on this board is, you know, I I thought I, sometimes I bring a business view or mindset to things when it's really education that we're talking about. And and that may not be positive or maybe positive. From a but from a business perspective, I think it's an opportunity for our district to consider continuing to keep an open look to because it it is a differentiator. It's something to make our business different than the other businesses and potentially an investment might cost us money, but what is the return on that investment over a three, five-year period with yet with numbers that that are counted into the district? So that, you know, we're looking at trying to be, you know, relevant as as the the world and landscape is building around us with, you know, DeSoto Grove and all these other areas, and and we don't have the housing to draw these kids in, but maybe we have some maybe we have some other opportunities to do. And so that that'd be my, maybe my closing comment to this. It's also my last meeting, but that that that's just, I'm looking at it from a business perspective, not from what it looks like today in implementing or making it happen.
Well, Kelly, you, I mean, that's why it's so helpful to have that perspective. It's an excellent point because what was just, was that just our last meeting with our enrollment study report? You know, we do have a housing limitation thing, and so how do you bring more students in if you don't have, I mean, no, I I hear what you're saying, hundred percent.
It's all respectful.
Oh, yes.
Questions related to virtual school students and the open enrollment thing that Kelly brought up as well. How do those kids count, again, how does it set caps for each building or each grade level, I forget how it's shaking out next year, but how does that, how do virtual students at U of M?
No, they don't, they don't, they don't count.
Oh, they don't count at all?
They're not part of that.
Okay, okay, so they're not. So I mean, in theory, we're going to have fifty kids coming to register for our school.
Yeah, the only reason, the only only way numbers matter is that's the MOU that we signed with Greenbush is we we identify how many students we are guaranteeing that we will put in there, and then they they build that and how many space additional spaces they'll save for us. And then beyond that, then how many, you know, what the amount looks like when we exceed that number.
So that that serves as our, if we had to have a cap on, like, you know, each other grade level, we have to have a cap for how many kids we anticipate being in that grade level or how much capacity we have, that would that would essentially serve as that.
The virtual students don't go into the brick and mortar because of the because the the brick and mortar caps are for the the in-person.
Just seats, just seats.
Just the seats, seats in the classroom.
Okay, don't hate me for bringing this up because I know we want to move on, but was part of the review of the virtual school thing process for how students are, forgive me for not having the right word. For example, if you identify, if if parents want to identify a child for special education services, that's a like a collaborative conversation. Is it just a question of I'm enrolling or is is had, was there any part of that kind of parental family partnership signup? Was that a part of looking at the virtual school review or was it the review process simply looking the sustainability aspect?
Sustainability aspect.
And I thought so.
When a when a family wants to go virtual with it, they start conversations with the building administrators and they'll have a conversation with them. They'll they'll, you know, try to go through that process, determine, are you, you know, this is what it's going to take, are you sure you want to do this? And then they work with Greenbush to to get them enrolled.
And that would continue to be part of the practice then? Because I think that's good. I mean, there are many success, I know, I mean, directly many success stories with with students with virtual school options. And also, there are sometimes other social emotional reasons for going that actually might be better served by being present at school. And, you know, I'm not here to make those decisions for anyone, but just supporting those parental conversations with staff and that that is important as part of what is truly going to be best for the student's education.
I I, while I'm here, I fully want to see a virtual option, whether it's through Greenbush or we get to a point where we can do something on our own. Because I do see the value, I saw it firsthand through my work with Greenbush. There are students that, for, like you said, for a variety of reasons, whether it's the the social aspect, the anxiety ridden of being in a classroom, and for some students it is, they they just wanted to work at a faster pace, and so they they needed that option. So to me, I I do value the virtual learning that that it can provide. So I do want to see that happen for our kids a little bit forward.
Thank you for looking at that. Okay, legislative priorities.
All right, so we talked last month about the opportunity of of looking at developing legislative priorities. And from this, it can create a an ability from the district standpoint to be able to say, these are, this is what the Board of Education has identified as as core values that are important that may that want, they want the public to know that we that you support and would like to see the, though, and we can pass these on to legislators to be able to know that this is what we would would like to see considered by by legislators. So what I wanted to do tonight is is go through the process of utilizing this as an opportunity as as almost a transition practice here. We've got a, this current board be able to reflect on the strategic plan that has been has been built, the district's improvement goals, and I've included those within the public comment of of board docs, as well as what our mission statement is. And what I'd like to go through the process is just brainstorm as a group and try to come to about a list of about five to eight items at at a maximum of what are those those core values, those core belief topics that this board values. So in January, when the new board starts, we can discuss the process of unpacking those values and and do we want to replace, do we want to add as the district moves forward? And then articulate and define what that looks like. So at this point in time, it's just more of a throwing ideas out there as a board. When you you come to an agreement there, I can jot the the item down, and then in, again, in January, I'll take and expand upon it with with the new board.
And Mark, our target here is state legislature, not the not the local.
Right, right, state. And and I'll also preface this, in the future with with the, when we do this, I'd like to see this conversation happening about October, November, so we finalize in December. But this is just that transition time, I thought it suited better.
Chris, do you want to make a proposal first?
I always, I always seem to, yeah. I mean, I think the the special education piece is going to continue to, the current funding structure is going to be hindrance to all school budgets, so I think it should continue to be a, or not continue to be, but that should be added to our consideration for legislative priorities because that's obviously beyond our, this board's scope of work that requires the legislature to to fund as they said they're supposed to. So that's one I would add up for for consideration for our for our board to advocate on that on that part. And that's probably going to be echoed by multiple other boards within our, well, probably most board in the state.
I agree.
Just as a broad philosophical thirty thousand-foot view, local control. And that can bridge into a lot of different areas where legislature has gotten real involved in in local communities. But philosophically, I don't know how everyone else feels, but that's.
So my experience is that it's helpful to be more specific with state legislators.
But he asked for broad topics, Tommy.
Stay in your lane, topic.
Right. I don't feel like he was asking me to be specific, although how much time we have. I mean, I can.
I think it's important to continue building awareness of what social emotional learning actually is and break down the misconception that it's indoctrinating students or it's deciding what they're going to learn, but it's about cognitive, interpersonal, intrapersonal
Another one that came up earlier from our presentations around CTE were related to, it sounds like there's a fairly complex funding structure and mechanism to, like, it sounds like a year's lag time between you start starting getting kids enrolled in those programs to when you start receiving additional funding for it. So again, I don't know the law particularly well in that in in that realm, so it'd be good for me to do a little homework before January, it sounds like. But advocating for more pieces like accreditation or certification tests being reimbursed from the state, for instance, or having some mechanism for that would be helpful because that came up in our conversation today, that that used to be the case, but it's not currently the case. And if that's our, I think it's pretty, I feel pretty confident saying that our community wants us to encourage kids to have real-world experiences and step out of high school with things like certifications or be be work-ready. And that would certainly help to enhance that ability for those kids to step out on, you know, May twenty-eighth and take a job and be ready for that job or their college
So I want to build on Kelly's comment of local control. There is there is discussion in the upcoming legislature legislative session to pass statutes that limit local communities' opportunities to increase or decrease local property taxes. And that speaks directly against local control, right? And handicaps local boards when we are, when we are trying to set budgets that meet the needs of local communities, right? So the the state has a, state legislators have a really good habit of writing checks or not writing checks that we have to cash at the local level. And I and and that is increasingly frustrating when when they don't seem to, don't seem to see the consequences of their actions at the big dome building in the middle of
That's what I would have said. I mean, I'm always harping on it. They want to push their taxing authority down on us, and now they want to limit that. So at some point, they need to either recognize that they need to be the ones generating revenue or allow us to. You can't just chop it off without consequence.
So what I've got so far, special education funding, local control. Example was the limiting the property assess, property tax assessments, building awareness of what SEO really is and advocating for CTE certification funding. Any others?
I would say more general partnership. I mean, the the whole goal of all of this, when I say local control or someone else is talking about the ability to, you know, the ability to build budgets, the entire purpose is, again and always, it's it's no one's Cancun vacation fund, it's how to best educate. And for those people who who believe that public education is the best shot for the most amount of kids, it would be nice for us to be able to work together on that, rather than do these sort of can-kicking exercises while increasing graduation requirements. But yet, you know, we should always, I mean, I'm glad to see expectations rising. That's, I think, striving for excellence at every level of education is important, but we we have to work together to be able to do that for kids. So that would be, again, without writing anything for you, that would be kind of just a general philosophical theme to get started.
You know what else? They should have educators on the education committee. Can you make that happen?
That's not the way assignments are.
All right, so I've I've added partnerships to develop the best public education system Okay, so in January, when the new board comes in, we'll start the process of doing the definition side of things and move along.
And they may have other ideas that were mentioned here. So thanks for for letting us be a part of that.
You bet.
All right, board member input, interlocal report.
All right, well, we, it's been busy at the interlocal. I think we've had three meetings since since we last got together as this board, too. The biggest news out of that is our our director has been there for seven, eight years. Dr. Dan Ray has has decided to retire for this school year. He's been amazing for our organizations as a whole to to have it steady leadership. That had been a revolving door of leadership the previous decade, basically, where we'd had people there for two or three years and then they would depart. So we'll certainly miss Dan, and we have, he's left some gigantic shoes to fill, which we are actively working on, getting as much prepared with the current board so that the new board, when they take their seats, will have as much, like, getting surveys out, getting focus groups out, doing as much homework and preparation for that as possible, so that they hit the ground running with as much information available to them, so that that new board makes a decision on who to hire next. Which brings me to the next point about this. We have a really quirky timeline in which that baton is going to get passed to those new board members, and some of their first initial acts as a interlocal board member are going to be scheduling interviews, looking at candidates, sitting down with interviews. It's going to be very similar to what we went through for for hiring Mr. Dodges while here, but sort of times three because there's three committees we're attempting to serve here with our interlocal as well. So so it's, again, very similar to what we engaged in for super hire, we've actually hired KSB to help us go through all those applicants and and encourage applicants from Colorado and Nebraska and Missouri and wherever else do, so and now nationwide search for that as well. But so anyway, so there's just going to be a whole lot of series of events there. So we do have new board members coming on for our own board here, but also for the interlocal, those folks are going to get to work quick when it comes to selecting that new individual there and interviewing them as well, so.
What's the ideal timeline for a hire?
We're looking at mid-February for for hiring that. Like, we, I don't have the timeline with me, I left that one at home, but I'll send that to 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 Mark to to share with everybody as well. I just saw some things, items in fluctuation. For instance, I thought our current board members lasted until mid-January. Turns out, you guys are expiring on the on the eighth.
That's harsh.
Yeah. Turned into dust and disappeared then. So we have, we have, interlocal has an next board meeting on the ninth, which I thought you all were going to be involved in that part as well, or at least Tony was going to be, he won't be elected official at that point, so I need to rethink how we're going to restructure that January meeting for that one as well. So so that already changes our timeline based on today's information, so to figure that part out. But yeah, so long story short, you were both sad and excited about the opportunity to hire somebody new there and that'll create opportunities and hopefully reengage all of our three committees as well. And I've been really active in talking to the superintendents and the and the other board members as well up to this point as well to make sure everybody's abreast of the of the changes that are coming on, as well as the procedural process there as well. Each of those other three community, or Buzzfool and Udora have also hired a superintendent in the last five years as well, so it's not a new process for most of those folks, but it just looks a little different because it's a director and not a superintendent. So just other little things, but that's a big deal that's shaken up right now, and I'll continue to keep you guys informed as that continues to evolve here. But so, yeah, just anticipate more emails, Mark, to, you know, me hectic, trying to figure out when we're going to have this focus group here and there, but it's all it's all coming together rather nicely with KSB's help as well. So that's it.
Thank you. Education advocacy info items in response to discussion from a previous meeting that that would be just a good general place card holder under the board member input. So it doesn't have to mean anything, it's just there.
So it's the Kansas Advocacy Network, and I think there was only one meeting, it's always on Zoom from last November to now, but it, they are really advocating with the legislators for education, pro-education, public education. They currently have a, well, every year they have a advocacy in action event in Topeka. I'm not able to go this year, and I don't know, Chris, if you're going to go.
I don't know when it is, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
So it that it is just an opportunity to meet, to watch the process, meet with committees and legislators, and so hopefully, hopefully one of these years. There's a women's conference, though, on March sixth and seventh for KSB.
In Topeka as well, or?
I guess it's only relevant to me except that more than you.
We are, we are sending a few individuals to that as well.
Oh, good, good. Miscellaneous.
I've got a miscellaneous item. So I've had conversations with with Kelly and Kelly, as well as the administration over at the high school. This is, started a little bit last year, and and this year it's come up. What we are going to be doing over the next semester is that, looking into what other districts are doing regarding breathalyzers at dances, and looking to see what practices they're using, what policies look like there. That is something that we'd we'd like to to implement and and determine, you know, what what does the practice look like? How often, in terms of how often are they used, when are they used? And when they're used, what what's their practice look like there? The other item that we want to look at is the vape wand detecting pieces there. It's it's still, it's still something that the schools battle all over the United States. And there are wands available that other districts are using, that we're learning more and more about. And so we would like to see what that looks like. So over the coming semester, it's it's our intent to to look at that and then be able to provide some information to the board, hopefully seeing something that might be put into policy for both of those items, as well as something we can put into our practice to help protect, you know, to protect our students.
Anyone else have miscellaneous items? Two quick notes. I know from the work session last summer, assimilating a board handbook was was and is one of my duties. And I am sorry that I was not able to get it to you to for tonight for approval. I'm working on it, and what I thought would be good is, though we will not, like we said before in our work session, we won't be voting on anything, but it can be a living document that everyone can see. And then if the new board likes that, or maybe, oh, I really wish there was something in here that would have covered that, you know, they can approve that, but at least will be a working draft of, Susan has sent me a couple of things, I think, three months ago. It was just one of those projects because it was not pressing that got put farther and farther, but I I don't want you guys to think I've forgotten. So I still have some homework to do, but it's not forgotten. And the other thing I want to make sure let board members know, though it is just the smallest gesture in comparison of what I know we would all like to do, but holiday treats were delivered on behalf of the board to all of the the four main buildings, school buildings, but then also all the other tech services, all the departmental heads throughout the district and including the interlocal. So I think there was like eleven between food service and all that, but they all received something, just some holiday treats from the BOE, so I want to make sure you guys knew that, in case somebody says something to you about it. Like, yeah. Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, so this is is not a list for the next forty-five minutes. Hopefully, this is four to five minutes. Just wanted to kind of give you an update. Typically, in December, we would do the KSB board policy review, and then in January, we would do the approval. With this being the transition time, what I thought would be the most applicable affair is put the policies for the the board meeting in January for first look and then approval in February. The early release, late time or late start timeline that I mentioned last month, I wanted to give you an update there. So we've got the survey going out to families that's still collecting. We do have more than a hundred and forty, some responses, I can tell you that, but the survey is still live, so I can't go over any results at this point. That will be collected through the end of this week. I will be working to put together a a small focus group together of, I've got some staff members involved, but I'd also like to reach out to some committee members to be part of that, to look over the responses there. It is, it is largely qualitative because that is probably the the most impactful, meaningful information that we'll provide. From that, the idea would be to present the first look information of that feedback to the board in January, with February being the month to approve a calendar, or if the board wishes to to move that to to March, they can. I can tell you at this point, the the way the calendar itself is built, that a late start or early release or any combination of sorts does not impact the beginning or ending of the school calendar. It does not impact the beginning or ending of any of our quarters or semesters. The way we we build our calendar, the way our teachers works to do it, we have an excess of hours that that beyond the eleven sixteen that the state requires for the school year. So basically, we could, any implementation of an early release would only occupy about one day's worth of that overage, still give us plenty of snow days if necessary. So that, more information to come there. The PLC plus update. PLC plus is a, is some edge you speak, education jargon there. It stands for professional learning communities. Basically, the idea behind that is these are groups of professional educators that are getting together to discuss student data, how students are performing. If we have them in an intervention to help improve a skill or improve a a gap in learning, then we want to look at data to make sure that we're heading in the right direction. And if we're not, we can make an adjustment so that we can get them moving in the direction that we want. And if we are making some growth, we can determine, are we at that growth, are we seeing the growth to a point where we need to move to another need for a child? In some cases, it's looking at curriculum, in some cases... In some cases, it's looking at assessment writing. But, it's an opportunity to look at what we're wanting our students to know and be able to do, how their learning is taking place, and what our responses will be, as well as the instruction that we're providing. How can we improve our instruction? And so, that's, that's going very well. We had a recent meeting last month, and we focused on clarity of instruction. And the presentation was incredibly good and meaningful, powerful. And so, in January, we've got a couple of our buildings that are taking that presentation, almost turnkeyed it, if you will, so that they can replicate that with their staff when they come back. So, the process, it's going fantastic. Amy De La Rosa and her colleague Josh Lee are doing a phenomenal job with our administrators and their building leader and their teacher leaders. Item number four, the second semester survey opt-in piece. As you'll recall, House Bill 2567 now requires school districts to provide parents the opportunity to opt their student in to any survey that is deemed non-instructional. And so, you're looking at surveys, questionnaires, batteries, assessments of that nature that aren't, that aren't considered instructional. For us, this is where our socio-emotional screener, it kind of gets, lives in that gray area. So, what we are doing back in the summer, that was part of enrollment, that allowed us to cover our first semester screening window. We need to do this, open this up again, so we can cover our second semester screening window. A parent has the ability to opt their child in. And if they choose not to, their child will not be provided with that socio-emotional screener, which we call my savers. And the student can also decide that they don't want to take it and we won't provide it to them. It is, it's a great way for us to get an idea of how a student is proceeding things. It's about 20 questions worth. And it's really valuable to the teachers when the students are able to take it. And so, though, that survey itself, or not survey, that questionnaire for parents to submit their opt-in will be going live 4th of January. Is that what we decided? Yeah?
Or the 3rd.
The 3rd, the 3rd of January. And then, we will be able to hit the ground running the middle of January with our winter assessments. And that will also cover us through, you know, the school year. Because it has to be four months, it expires in four months, if you will. So, so that'll be going out there. Item number five, new board member roles. And I couldn't think of a more clever way to title that. So, basically, we'll be looking at with the new board coming on, in addition to the president and the vice president. We also have representatives at the Baldwin Education Foundation. I assume, Susan, you'll maintain the district site council presence that's there. And then, as Chris alluded to, we will need to fill the second seat of the interlocal. Are there any other roles?
Negotiations.
And go, both negotiations. We'll have both negotiations. So, what I would say to the three remaining, as well as the two here and those watching at home, that we'll have, we'll have some roles that we'll want to discuss and start filling. And we can provide access to training for those, particularly with the negotiations. There's great resources available through KSB, the professional development that they provide, as well as some of the online training that we provide as well to get that, to get them moving. So. And the last item is a trophy showcase, Baldwin High School. So, about two months ago, a month or so ago, I received an inquiry on information regarding donations made to the district several years ago, when a former employee passed away. And with the intent of those memorial donations being used for the purpose of building a showcase. Nate and I, it would have gone dated back to about 2013, 2014, 2015. And so, Nate and I dug through some of the electronic files that he was, he was using. Megan went through and looked through board minutes. Ran with find anything. Went visit, visited with, with some folks at the high school. I visited with Gary, Mr. Dorothy. And we were not able to uncover anything that noted that. But, what we do recognize is that there is a need at the high school to make sure that our students' athletic and program success, whether it is through FBLA or forensics or not academic, academically, we need to make sure that their efforts are showcased. And so, last week, Kelly and Brand, Gary, Mike, Nate and I met and looked at high school and just started looking at, you know, what are, what are some different areas and ways we could look at, at making sure that we're, we're putting those items on display, as well as coming up with a process that defines how items get cycled in and then cycle out. There's only so much wall space that we have over there. Eventually, we're gonna need to be able to come up with something. And so, they're working on coming up with that. But, I just wanted to give the board some acknowledgement there that we understand that there was talk of the donations there. We've not been able to find record of that, but we still see a need to make sure that happens. One individual that comes to mind is our retiring, Mr. Spielman, and his 25, 28 trophies that he's helped lead our kids through, that we're able to acknowledge that. You know, we've got some, some recognition there that we want to make sure that we get put on display and make sure that that gets out there so that that's also another destination there for, for individuals that come visit the high school.
Well, that's a big deal at most schools. I mean, if you travel around to, you know, other schools and spend time in the hallways in between events, there's, it's, there's a lot of history. It's very interesting. It's not all, it's not all sports. It's activities and many things, I think. And so.
Well, we've got, we've got student interest and we've got parent interests that are wanting to help financially to see this through. So, we want to utilize this as an opportunity to, to enhance the showcase opportunities that are the activities and for students at high school.
Well, and it tells our story of our overall educational environment. And so, I'm excited about that. And thank you for that update. All right. I move, we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Elliott.
Can I?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
Running out of chances, but I'll ask a question back to your report if I can.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I misread the room.
No. So, on the early release concept, how would that impact activities as far as would, would, would practices and after-school activities just start early then? Or is there gonna be a gap where?
There, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the discussion that we'd have when we're looking at what the data shows. Because what the intent is, teachers and coaches would be in professional development meetings, looking at the data that's there. And so, you're looking at, the big question is, what do we have? What are students doing until, until that starts?
I could see that being a kind of an obstacle. Is there a, is there a, is that, do you have the flexibility of handling that to where you could allow those activities directors to fill that time at a different time? You know, so that they could, so that they, you know, because I'm thinking of junior high basket, during basketball season, whatever, football season, you know, those kids have to ride the bus home, or their parents come get them, have to take them home, bring them back. I just could see that.
Well, I'll tell you, the concept that we're looking at is once a month versus, you know, every week or every other week. And so, that is part of that question of what will we do with, it's not just the junior high kids. The student, anytime there's an early release or a late start, the population that is, that has the biggest impact is the elementary, the primary and the elementary. But, the, what are our students in athletics? What do they do? That's, students that can drive, generally, they're able to go. But, those that either rely on a bus or are unable to, you know, what's the plan for them? And so, there are districts that have classified staff that have the ability to, in some cases, it's an after-school, you know.
Dodge ball tournament.
Or, yes, some activities there, mentoring. It could be, there are other opportunities there that.
Fair enough. I just wanted to.
That's a good question. Even like our employee of the month teaches choir, demonstrate kids after school twice a week, I think it is. So, that'd be taken into account as well.
Absolutely. So, that's a good question.
Any other questions related to the report? I'm sorry, I.
No, I'm sorry.
Didn't, no, I didn't give enough time there. Okay. I move, we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Elliott to discuss an individual employee matter related to the justification under coma for non-elected personnel. And the open meeting will resume at 9:12.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Question carries, 7-0. Mr. Wool Smith to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to the justification under COMA for non-elected personnel. And the open meeting will resume at nine, uh, 9:17.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge to discuss superintendent contract. This is pursuant to the justification under COMA for non-elected personnel. And the open meeting will resume at 9:20.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Tony Spoile, we need those one more time.
Do we really?
True.
Well, yeah.
One more meeting. Well, that way we gets a gift each time.
All right. We'll call the meeting back to order. Sorry, Andy. Did anyone have any, any other board member have any executive session related to the personnel report? If not, then we would need a motion for approval on that.
I move we approve the personnel report as presented. Second.
All those in, Andy has moved, Tony has seconded. All those in favor of approving the personnel report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, seven zero. I move we approve the superintendent contract as corrected.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes.
Who's second?
I move.
Kelly, Kelly.
Kelly, seconded. All right. Outgoing board members, any, any words? I don't want to, it's okay if not.
We're still streaming.
Yeah, we're still streaming. It's 9:21, but.
I'm very grateful to have had such smart, respectful, delightful to work with people on this board. So, thanks, thanks to you all.
Kelly, anything to add?
Um, no, it's been, it's been interesting. I've learned a lot from it and, you know, it's been drinking from a fire hose at times and other times wishing you had no water. But, yeah, no, it, it's been, it's been very worthwhile and, and I, I look at things through a different lens in a different way and understand things in a different way than I did before. Some of those aren't any easier to digest, but at least I understand why it is the way it is. So, no, I appreciate the, the opportunity to professionally interact with all of you sitting at this table and I wish you all nothing but the very best.
Likewise, I want to wish you all the very best and I, they're just, I'm just so appreciative of each and every one of yours perspective and how I've grown and learned so much from, from all of you and just, you'll be missed. You'll have big shoes to fill. I look forward to the new board members who are coming on, joining as well, but you absolutely will be missed.
Tony, anything to add?
I have, I've served on a lot of boards locally and at the state level. I can say that the work that we did in the last four years has been probably some of the least enjoyable, just in terms of the challenges, but some of the most important work that I've done during my, my time in public service. And I very much appreciate all of you being a part of that, that process. I think we, I think we've done outstanding work and work that I will always be very proud of.
Chris, Phil, I know you guys are still going to be here, but if you have anything you'd.
Yeah, you guys are always welcome to come back to the board. Meetings and sit and watch.
Chris, Phil, I know you guys are still going to be here, but if you have anything you'd.
Yeah, you guys are always welcome to come back to the board. Meetings and sit and watch.
No, it's just been great, like, I, I, it's been a battle-tested group, been through a lot and it's, it's going to be, like was mentioned earlier, big shoes to fill. I'm sure we have some great folks to step into that role, but I hope you guys enjoy your relaxing Monday nights and not have to be in board meetings for hours on end anymore. But come back and join by any time. We'll be here.
Well, I, I thank you all. Megan Johnson, we've, we've been through some stuff. A, a good board cannot function without a good clerk, so I have to, I have to say something to Megan. We were trying to hire a superintendent while folks were Christmas shopping and doing Zoom meetings and we were bound and determined to get that done before Christmas so that we could get our first choice.
That's right, I forgot about that.
Yep.
Tornado.
Torn, I mean, yes, we, we have. We've, it's, you know, obviously, we're not going to go through everything that we've all been through, but it is, it is important to, to learn from the times, that you need to learn from the times and it's also important to reflect on the things that, that went well. And I think I'm so proud of, to be beside each of you and you, you do not see before you seven identical minds and that's the beauty of it. For folks who've paid any kind of attention to things going on in other places, spirited disagreements have become something different in a lot of, in a lot of elements in our society. And I'm, I could not be more proud of the decorum. That doesn't mean identical thinking. That means mutual respect and professionalism, valuing the democratic process. And I will always be grateful for that, not just for how that helped me get through hard times personally and as a board president, but also that example for our kids, to be able to see that, whether they totally realize it or not. That civic responsibility and civic engagement piece, I'm, I'm so thankful to each of you for keeping that, that rolling. So, thank you all. And did we approve the contract? I mean, I'm like, I'm so emotional, I can't even, yes. So, let's get back to business and all we have left to do. Thank you all. Good luck to the new board. You're going to do great. It's the right time. There's exciting things ahead for our district and this is going to be, this is going to be wonderful. But this has been a great experience and I'm, I feel incredibly grateful, even for the hard stuff. I'm grateful for that, too. So, with that, that's adjourned.
Mr. Parks, you be the honors. I move we adjourn. I will second.
All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 9:26. Thank you, everyone.
Happy holidays.
You, too.
Oh, yeah. Meeting adjourned.